We'll begin the city council meeting for the 26th of October 2016. On va commencer la réunion du conseil pour le 26 octobre 2016. For those who are able to, could you please rise for a moment of personal reflection? If you could remain standing, we'll ask our colleague Conseiller Mathieu Fleurie to introduce our special guest from De La Salle, who will sing our national anthem. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, everyone. Un plaisir pour nous ce matin d'avoir... It's a pleasure for us this morning to have three students from De La Salle High School, Winadarius, Annika, France Forget, Vanessa, Trevissani. And they are all in vocal classes at the school, and we know the prowess of De La Salle in terms of arts and francophone arts at all levels. And so we have future voices for our community. So without further ado, I invite them to sing the national anthem. Thank you for the three students in De La Salle High School.
...campaign, la campagne pour 2016 pour Centre Aide United Way. And I'd like to recognize in the audience with us today, Michael Allen, President and CEO of United Way Centre Aide Ottawa, Mark Belanger, United Way Centre Aide Ottawa Donor Relations Manager, Kathleen Kemp, United Way Centre Aide Ottawa Campaign Co-Chair, Dan Chegne, City of Ottawa 2016 United Way Employee Campaign Co-Chair, and René Richard, City of Ottawa 2016 United Way Employee Campaign Manager. The work accomplished every day by city employees and the achievements of the United Way Centre Aide really do go hand in hand to improve the lives of thousands of residents of the City of Ottawa.
The work accomplished every day by city employees and achievements of the United Way Centre Aide Ottawa go in hand in hand to improve the lives of thousands of Ottawa residents.
Since it was designated the corporate charity of choice for the City of Ottawa in 2001, city employees have raised a remarkable $6 million for the United Way Centre Aide Ottawa. The incredible contributions of City of Ottawa employees have helped change the lives of more than 6,855 people in our community since 2001. And during the 2015 campaign, city employees raised $352,000, changing the lives of close to 1,300 residents.
During the 2015 campaign, city employees raised $352,000, changing the lives of 1,259 residents in need.
This year, the city's employees' goal is to help 1,340 people by raising a total of $375,000. The connection between the City of Ottawa and the community it serves is strong.
The connection between the City of Ottawa and the community it serves is strong.
Social service programs that are funded by the City of Ottawa to support our most vulnerable residents. And giving to the United Way is 100% local. The money stays right here in our community to serve those in need. Donations are used to support more than 90 local programs, helping people with disabilities, at-risk children and youth, homeless youth, people facing mental health and addiction issues, and many others. A few examples include the Boys and Girls Club, World Skills Employment Centre, and the Distress Centre of Ottawa and the region. The United Way continuously fosters partnerships between government, business, and the community at large.
The United Way continually fosters partnership between business, government, and the community at large.
For being here today and wish you, the City of Ottawa employees, a very successful campaign. And I'd ask maybe if the United Way folks can come up, and we'll ask members of council to come up to get one group shot to show the unity of our campaign with the United Way. So if our friends can come up, and Roger, you can help us up, and we'll get members of council in the circle to salute the launch of our campaign and to thank the people, Dan Chegne and others that I've mentioned from the city, if they could come as well, our campaign team. Because who else is here from the campaign team, Dan? Here you are. All right, it's only two of you. You got your work cut out for you. All right. There we go. Come on in here, the chair right in here. In the back. All people in the back.
Can you move your shorts? Can y'all move back to first? Make sure I can get a second. Keep going, keep going.
I want to be the senior.
Can you come in front, Catherine? No?
Well, good luck to our entire United Way campaign team here in the City of Ottawa and the broader city. You've got your work cut out for you, and now more than ever, we need to support this great cause. So thank you, Michael and your team, and to your co-chairs, the very best. Merci beaucoup. Today is Childcare Worker and Early Childhood Educator Appreciation Day. This is an opportunity to reflect on the roles and responsibilities of some very important people in our community who nurture and educate the most important little people in our lives. It's a day to recognize and thank childcare workers and early childhood educators who do so much for our children in the many centers and classrooms throughout the city. On behalf of the City of Ottawa and council, I am honored to extend a warm welcome to representatives from the Community and Social Services Department and to all of our guests here today. I have the pleasure of introducing two individuals who are here to represent the caring city staff in our municipal childcare centers and are joining us to mark this important day. First, I'd like to welcome Counselor Deans, Chair of CPS, to come forward for the presentation. Thank you, Counselor. And I'm pleased to invite Ms. Lana Dejardin, who is a supervisor at the Dr. E. Couture Childcare Centre, and Ms. Georgia Robinson, who is a teacher at the Esther Bye Childcare Centre, to come forward. Lana Dejardin is an experienced and capable supervisor who has been with the city for 22 years and has dedicated most of her career to work at the Dr. Couture Childcare Centre. She is a wonderful representative of many incredible people who nurture, care for, and educate our children in their formative years. Also with us today, Georgia Robinson, who has been with the city 25 years and has dedicated most of her career at Esther Bye Childcare Centre. I'm pleased to welcome you with this important presentation.
Je suis très heureux de vous accueillir à cette présentation. I'm very pleased to welcome you to this important presentation.
...of having safe, reliable, and nurturing care and education for our children.
Nous reconnaissons tout qu'il est très important. We all recognize the profound importance of having safe, reliable, and nurturing care and education for our children.
...helps to raise awareness of the many significant roles and responsibilities that childcare workers and early childhood educators play in the lives of children, family, and our communities. On behalf of my colleagues on city council and on behalf of the residents of Ottawa, I'd like to thank you very much for your work and dedication and for all you do to shape the learning and development of our precious children. And we'd like to present you with this proclamation that proclaims October 26, Childcare Worker and Early Childhood Educator Appreciation Day in the City of Ottawa. Congratulations.
Okay, I just wanted to say thank you very much for the acknowledgement and just how important child... Just how important early childhood education is to our children, and thank you for the opportunity.
So Counselor Deans is going to stay because we have our City Builder Award from Counselor Deans's community. And I'd like to ask a number of people to come forward. Ms. Gert Dreessen, if she would come forward, representing the Greenborough branch of the Friends of the Ottawa Public Library, as well as Alison Neusbaum, manager, Greenborough Library Branch, and Kathy Fisher, an OPL Board representative from Greenborough, as well as Counselor Tim Tierney, the Chair of the Ottawa Public Library, to come forward. Welcome, bienvenue. The Greenborough branch of the Friends of the Ottawa Public Library Association is a group of community volunteers who have given over 25,000 hours of their time to the Ottawa Public Library. This group of dedicated volunteers have sorted, priced, and sold tens of thousands of books, successfully raising over $100,000 for the OPL.
Ces bénévoles dévoués ont... This group of dedicated volunteers have sorted, priced, and sold tens of thousands of books, successfully raising over $100,000 for the OPL.
...to Ottawa. Their dedication is apparent through their unique café-style approach and even providing the Greenborough Library with items such as audiovisual equipment, shelving for DVDs, and furniture for the children's play area. The volunteers also provide opportunities for high school students to earn their community service hours.
Les bénévoles offrent aux... The volunteers also provide opportunities for high school students to earn their community service hours.
...recently celebrate their 10th anniversary, and over the years, the dedicated volunteers have gone above and beyond the call of duty to improve the library and give back to the community. These volunteers are truly vital to the health and prosperity of the Greenborough Library.
Ces bénévoles sont absolument essentiels à la santé et la prospère. Those volunteers have worked hard to build and maintain a strong relationship with both the library and the community.
The library and the community. And on any given day, the hustle and bustle surrounding their café and bookshop makes it clear how these volunteers are well-loved and appreciated in the community. For your unwavering dedication to the library, I'm pleased to present you with the Mayor's City Builder Award on behalf of members of city council, and thank you for the tremendous work you've done and continue to do in the Greenborough Library. Well done.
My name is Gert Dreessen, and I'm a resident of Ottawa South. On behalf of the FOPLA Group of volunteers at the Greenborough Library, I would like to express my thanks and appreciation for receiving the Mayor's City Builder Award this year, and I accept the award on behalf of all our volunteers at Greenborough. I have been a volunteer by the book since February 2014 and became active as scheduling the timetables of the volunteers in early 2015. We have a dedicated group who work well as a team and share the love of books. Once again, thank you. It has been an honor to serve the library and the people because many of our customers come from all walks of life and appreciate our services. Thank you.
As you know, he chaired our first-ever Education and Economy Summit that was a great success. We had over 250 people. The Governor General opened it with some remarkable comments about his experience, both in the world of academia and law and government. And he, Counselor Brockington, and I and the steering committee will be working very closely over the next several months to bring a report back to Fedco and an action plan on what we can do to strengthen the ties between the post-secondary and secondary educational institutions and our local business community. So thank you, Counselor Brockington. I've received some very positive feedback from the session, and there's a great cross-section of people at the event, and I appreciate all of your efforts. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Conseiller Manette.
Present.
Counselor Middick.
Present.
Counselor Harder, I'm here. Counselor Wilkinson.
Present.
Counselor Elchantiri.
Present.
Counselor Kadri.
Present.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Shirelli.
Here.
Counselor Egley.
Here.
Counselor Deens.
Here.
Counselor Tierney.
Present.
Conseiller Fleurie.
Si.
Counselor Neusbaum.
Here.
Counselor McKenney.
Present.
Counselor Leeper.
Here.
Counselor Brockington.
Here.
Counselor Cherneschenko.
Present.
Conseiller Cloutier.
Present.
Conseiller Blay.
Present.
Counselor Daruz.
Here.
Counselor Moffett.
Here.
Counselor Kakish.
Present.
Counselor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Confirmation of minutes, adoption of process verbal pour le 12 octobre 2016, carried. Declaration of interests, including those originally arising from prior meetings, declaration de conflit d'intérêt, none. Communications as presented, no regrets filed to date. Motion to introduce reports, motion important, presentation de rapport. Counselor Middick, signed by Counselor Cloutier, please.
Thank you, Mayor. That the Community and Protective Services Committee Report 18, Environment Committee Report 11, and Planning Committee Report 33 Alpha be received and considered.
Carried. Committee reports, rapport des committees, Community and Protective Services, Crime Prevention Ottawa, Annual Report, rapport annuel de promotion du crime Ottawa, received. Ottawa Paramedic Service Review, examen de services paramétiques d'Ottawa, carried. Shankman Arts Centre, Capital Renewal Fund, centre des arts Shankman, fond de renouvellement d'imobilisation, carried. Clean Water and Wastewater Fund, hold, Counselor Brockington. Recommended water, wastewater, and stormwater rate structured, carried. Well, we just carried it, Counselor, so you got your way, so...
It would purely be one of those thank you to all the people who had been involved in this. This is an extraordinary amount of work that, of course, staff took a very big lead on, but also so many members around this table work into. We know it's not absolutely perfect, and we will be monitoring it as it goes, but I did want to take a moment to thank city staff and the most affected councillors in particular who worked so hard on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning Committee Report Number 33, excusez-moi, rapport numéro 33 A de la communauté de l'urbanisme. We have a motion by Counselor Moffett, seconded by Counselor Daruz. Counselor Moffett, if you'd like to introduce the motion, please.
Thank you. It's with regard to the need for rural site plan control and hydrogeological study for coach houses to be located on private services. I'll just read the motion out. Whereas the report recommends that the minimum lot size on which a coach house as of right should be 0.8 hectares, which is two acres, when on private services. And whereas the provision of a hydrogeological study is required by the Rural Site Plan Control application that applies in the case of lots with private services, and whereas public delegations at the Agricultural Affairs Committee indicated that there is a strong interest across the rural area for consideration to be given for allowing coaches or private services to have a lower financial burden for administrative and technical requirements, therefore be resolved that staff be directed to further investigate mechanisms through which any or all of the following may be achieved. A, the possibility of waiving the site plan control requirement while still ensuring that the provision of private services for coach house in the rural area can take place in full compliance with all safety regulations and provincial policy statement directions on water quality and quantity. And B, that the possibility of waiving the requirement for hydrogeological studies or accepting lower-cost versions of such studies to demonstrate the suitability of private services. And therefore be it further resolved that the findings be brought back to Agricultural Affairs Committee by second quarter of 2017. Essentially what this comes down to is that we have a process for secondary dwelling units. It's quite different than the process for coach houses, and we want to make sure that we're actually offering a real viable option for residents in the rural area to be able to go forward with coach houses as an option and not just as a more expensive option than a secondary dwelling unit. So this will... We plan to work with staff, the members of ARAC. Counselor Elchantiri was discussed this quite at length at committee, same with Counselor Daruz, and we think that it's important to look at this a bit further, and we'll be working with staff on this in the coming months and some other municipalities. There aren't any municipalities in Ontario that allow coach houses at the moment, but there are in other parts of the country, and I was talking to one in Maple Ridge, BC yesterday. So I think it's important to look at all the options before we come forward with a final plan on the coach houses on private services.
And I believe the Chair of Planning Committee and staff are okay with this?
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor. So on the amendment by Counselors Moffett and Daruz, carried. On the main motion as amended, carried. Thank you all. Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee, we have to... Yes, sorry, my apologies. The last time, we have to receive the summary of submissions. Received. And then we carry the ARAC and Planning Committee recommendation on page 10. The next item is item number seven, permitted building heights for accessory buildings, hôtels de bâtiments accessoires autorisés. Carried. Item number eight is the Official Plan Amendment and Zoning Bylaw, Amendment 113 and 115, Echo Drive, modification de plan, au plan officiel et au règlement de zonage 113 et 115, promenade Echo. Carried on recommendation and carried on summary of submissions. Carried. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? On the bulk consent agenda is presented, carried. So we'll go back to the item that was held by Counselor Brockington. This is the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund. This is the federal program that was announced recently, and Counselor Brockington has the floor.
Thank you, your worship, and good morning to everyone. Certainly, I support the Clean Water and Wastewater Initiative Fund. It's certainly an opportune time to partner with the federal government and the provincial government, and I will be supporting the recommendation before us. However, at Environment Committee last week, for members of council who were not present, I did raise issues with the infrastructure that is in place that serves the Mooneys Bay Pavilion, the water infrastructure that's in place there. And from what I understand, despite its antiquated condition, I questioned staff why it had been left off of the list, the proposed list. Since that committee meeting, I have met with senior staff members from both Public Works and Parks and Rec to discuss this matter further, and I do have some additional questions that I just want to put on the public record as they come from my community. So the first is to the General Manager of Parks and Recreation. It's my understanding, and if you could confirm, that council did set aside some funds in the 2016 budget to review the pavilion at Mooneys Bay. Could you just describe what those funds are for and an update on where we are on that particular process?
Mr. Mayor, the Counselor is correct. That as part of the 2016 budget, there is $150,000 set aside in the capital budget to have a look at the Mooneys Bay Pavilion. Primarily, two things, to undertake a structural review of what exists there today and to develop a plan to go forward to either renovate or replace the pavilion. So coming out of this exercise, we would have a better idea of the current condition of the pavilion and what might be required in order to support programming at the site in the future. Work on this has not begun at this point. Other works at Mooneys Bay this year have kept us busy, but it will form part of our work plan for 2017.
So again, if it's not addressed this calendar year, that will carry over, those funds will carry over, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, this funding is in the capital budget and will remain and carry over into 2017.
Thank you. And so will future pavilion upgrades include the water main issues that have been identified?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have a work plan for what that might entail. If the pavilion were to be expanded or replaced with a larger building, our suspicion at this point is that some work would be required in terms of increasing capacity for both water supply to the site as well as dealing with the pumping system to remove wastewater, which must be pumped back up to Riverside Drive. But at this point, because we don't have a scope of the operation, we cannot say definitely whether it will or will not. Chances are certainly proposals that have been put forward in the past for a more multifunctional building would likely require that, but to what degree, we don't know at this point.
Thank you. I just want to remind council that the pavilion does need work. It still may be functional, but it is aged. I describe it as like a Soviet-era bunker. It's certainly not aesthetically pleasing. I think it's at capacity, and certainly I receive multiple complaints about the quality of the washrooms, the lack of showers, et cetera. With the Canada 150 Playground officially opening on July 1st of next year, we did hear in the spring from the public concerns about washroom access and the fact that this playground is not particularly or immediately beside the pavilion. Could staff just comment on whether or not washroom facilities will be provided at the pavilion or the new playground?
Mr. Mayor, we have as part of the landscaping plan provided an asphalt pad to install portable toilets, and it would be our intent for next spring to have portable washrooms available close to the new playground. And then, of course, further away, the pavilion washrooms will be available as well.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll just say that the pavilion does need work. It's my understanding the water mains would be included, potentially included in a future project. I look forward to working with staff to commence the study on the needs of the pavilion, which would include the utilities, including the community. And at this point, I am willing to support the motion before us without any future additional amendments. So thank you.
Okay. So on the report, carried. Thank you. Disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authority, suite à donner les articles ratifiés par les comités en vertu de pouvoir délégués. Carried. Motion to adopt reports, motion important, adoption de rapport. Counselor Middick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. That Community and Protective Services Committee Report 18, Environment Committee Report 11, and Planning Committee Report 33 Alpha be received and adopted as amended.
Carried. Adopted. And that's in one, it's in Ward 21, Ashton Station, also the same. And, okay, so councillor Tierney will do the other one.
So, Mr. Mayor, those were the notes of motion before, and it's all about Fit and Check. Therefore, be it resolved that council of the City of Ottawa exempt the project on the land as described above, and all the residential, commercial, and industrial land use restriction as identified in section 2.3, 2.3F, 2.3G, and so on. So I'm not sure if you want me to read some more, Mr. Mayor, but basically that's...
No.
Those are the same. All what we do is to support the province where they do the point program. So basically, the municipality in support, but we don't have a decision on it. It's all in the hand of the province. But it's important for our resident to support them on city council so they can receive their point system from the ministry.
Right. These motions remind me of that movie Groundhog Day.
Very much.
Every two weeks, we seem to have the same motion, but they're good motions because they're helping with the FIT program. So this one is on Ashton Station Road. Carried. The next motion is moved by councillor Tierney, seconded by councillor Chernoshenko. This one is a little different, councillor Tierney, and it's in your ward as well. For yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as when I introduced this motion, the short of it is, rolpec. We have a lot of wastewater, 400 million litres of water racing through there every day. Many smart cities have adopted harnessing their power of poop, I jokingly say, and we can take advantage of that for the creation of electricity. So that being said, therefore, be resolved that city council supports the construction and operation of these projects anywhere in the City of Ottawa. Therefore, be further resolved that the resolution's sole purpose to enable the participants of the FIT program to receive priority points under the FIT program and may not be used for the purpose of any other form of municipal approval in relation to the application or projects or any other purpose. Be it further resolved that the resolution shall expire in 12 months after it's adopted by council.
Great. So congratulations to our staff for that innovation on the motion. Carried. Adopté. Motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. Motion exigeant la suspension des règles de procédure. The first one is a motion by councillor Moffat, seconded by councillor El Shantiri. It's the feed-in tariff on suspension. Carried. Councillor Moffat, please.
Thank you. This is something we've actually dealt with in the past. This is from the Burrits Rapids Renewable Energy Association. We actually have Bob Walker here in the audience from Burrits Rapids to support this. It's a hydro power project using the rapids, the actual Burrits Rapids, I guess you could say. It's something that we've supported, like I said, in the past. They're coming up on the application process again, starting October 31, and this is just supporting that once again so that they can try to get this up and running. They've been working with North Grenville on this as well, and it's a mutually beneficial project between North Grenville and the City of Ottawa, as Burrits Rapids is a border town. So the motion is, therefore, be resolved that council approve the municipal council's support resolution contained in Appendix A worded in accordance with the IESO's prescribed template.
Just on this, one of our former colleagues, I think councillor Deans, you'll remember, Mary Hegan, is involved with this project, and she took me on a tour of it a couple of years ago. It's a beautiful, of course, Burrits Rapids is a beautiful village in probably the farthest village from the central core. So we thank our representative from Burrits Rapids for being here, and I think it's a very exciting project, and I offered, if I could be of any help, to facilitate this because I know it's taken quite some time to get to this stage, and I'd be happy to do it because I think it's a great project, right on the water with the rapids, acting as the facility to turn the...
That's right. Actually, you mentioned it's the farthest from the city. Burrits Rapids is actually 10 miles closer to New York State than it is to City Hall. So it's just a unique little geographical tidbit of information on the City of Ottawa.
And the...
That's not in the motion.
The community hall in Burrits Rapids is actually, which is the City of Ottawa's community hall, it's in North Grenville.
Yeah, but we actually fund it more than North Grenville. Don't tell anyone.
That's right. So on the motion. Carried. The next motion requiring suspension of the rules of procedure is moved by myself, seconded by councillor, or seconded by my, sorry, moved by councillor Shirelli, seconded by myself, with respect to Poland's anniversary on suspension of the rules. Carried. Councillor Shirelli, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is a motion to allow the Polish community to plant a tree in Centre Point Park, celebrating its 1,050th anniversary as a country. And because we just don't have a program covering this, we need a motion of council, and because fall is going to quickly end, we need to do it sooner rather than later.
Great. Thank you. On the motion. Carried. Thank you. The next motion requiring suspension of the rules of procedure is moved by myself, seconded by councillor, or seconded by my, sorry, moved by councillor Shirelli, seconded by myself, with respect to Poland's anniversary on suspension of the rules. Carried. Councillor Shirelli, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is a motion to allow the Polish community to plant a tree in Centre Point Park, celebrating its 1,050th anniversary as a country. And because we just don't have a program covering this, we need a motion of council, and because fall is going to quickly end, we need to do it sooner rather than later.
Great. Thank you. On the motion. Carried. Thank you. The next motion is by councillor Fleury, seconded by councillor Deans, with respect to noise bylaw issues on suspension of the rules. Carried. Councillor Fleury, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we have the motion in front of us. This is the same motion that we've seen at CPS Committee, which received majority endorsement. Therefore, be it resolved, have been changed so that it doesn't impact the FT or the budget portion, but really ask staff to review as part of the 2017 budget that allocation. I think that's the primary one. Again, this stems the issue from the operational issue that Ottawa Police Service does not respond to noise. Ottawa bylaw has now extended some of the hours, but as you know, there's 777 calls that we cannot get to, and I think those are critical hours after 2:00 AM when there are noise issues. It's important that the city be able to respond.
I believe councillor Deans has a motion.
Thank you. I'm Mr. Mayor Smith, and seconded by councillor McKennie. That city council refer councillor Fleury's motion to the city manager for consideration during the budget 2017 process, while also taking note of additional pressures created by Canada's sesquicentennial anniversary. And, Mr. Mayor, just to speak to this briefly, we have had some offline discussions where we thought it best to give the city manager some time to consider the concerns being raised, especially by the downtown councillors, in accordance with the 2017 budget. So that's the referral.
Okay, so a referral takes precedent. On referral, councillor Kakish, do you want to speak to referral?
No, just questions on the motion itself to staff.
Okay, we're in a referral issue now, but I think we can be a little flexible. If you had a couple of questions on the main motion?
The discussion we had at Community and Protective Services Committee, I think, you know, staff were...
Have to speak up, councillor.
Staff were supposed to come back and give us more information on that, and you said, going back in the response you provided yesterday evening, it's going to take much more time to get those details. So if you weren't able to get them now, when are you, how much time do you need to do that process?
Mayor, based on today's motion, referral to city manager, I've had the opportunity to talk to city manager, so staff will sit with Mr. Kanalakis and see what we can provide. I mean, if it's a complete review of the bylaw services, I think that'd be challenging to get that information with council so you can have that part of your deliberation. But if it's for other options, we can perhaps look at that.
Okay. I dissented on this item at committee because I didn't really like the direction it was going. I mean, what we did see in that initial report is that 96% to 97% of the calls are being addressed, and it's only a small portion that are not being addressed. And this is a six-month period as well that was, it was over a six-month period. So I think it's too preliminary at this point to jump the gun and to provide anything at this point. And so I'm not prepared. I dissented against this. I think it might be good to have that information.
Councillor, I gave you some leeway, but we're on deferral, so unless you want to speak to deferral.
Okay.
Thank you. Councillor Blay, do you wish to speak to deferral?
Referral?
No, a referral, rather, in Polish.
Yes.
Okay, speaking on referral.
Yes, thank you. I don't know what we're referring, and maybe the clerk can clarify or someone can clarify.
We're referring the motion.
No, I appreciate that, but the original motion says to have bylaw and regulatory services review, which is a review, for the 2017 budget, and the referral motion says to have it, the city manager, review it for the 2017 budget. So I'm just not sure what exactly it is we're referring. They seem to be the same thing.
No, what we're doing is, I think councillor Deans and McKennie motion was brought forward because we don't, it's not appropriate to bring new spending initiatives to the floor of council before the budget is tabled. So because there are potential budget implications for the additional resources required by the mover, the best course of advice is to send it to the city manager as we put the final touches on the budget. So I support the referral motion. I think it makes sense. I understand councillor Fleury has some challenges in his ward, as do other councillors with respect to noise, but because there are potential budget implications, it should go to the city manager, and we'll deal with it before the budget is tabled. So unless you want to speak to referral, councillor Hubley? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. If we're referring this for consideration of the budget, does the rule apply that we have to find something to bring out of the budget in that area to put this into the budget?
Well, up until the point that the budget is tabled, the answer is no. Anyone could move anything in, but at the end of the day, it's going to have to meet the budget guidelines that we all set.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Okay. So on referral. Carried. Does anyone else have a motion requiring suspension of the rules of procedure? Sched in notre motion. Notice is a motion for consideration at subsequent meetings. Avides motion pour examen à réunion subséquences. Conseiller Cloutier, seconded by councillor Fleury, please. Introduce your motion. Notice a motion.
Merci, Monsieur le Maire. Just notice a motion for the November 9 council meeting. As we know, Ottawa 2017 is going to be a very, very, very busy year, and yesterday Lonely Planet said that Canada was the country to visit in 2017, and Ottawa is the city to visit in Canada. So just, whereas overnight parking of Class A, B, and C vehicles is not presently permitted within the parking area of the above noted facilities, and there are 10 that are noted above, and whereas campground use, which is required to permit campsites, is not currently permitted at the above facilities under the city's zoning bylaw, there be resolved that there are three extended parking, including Class A, B, and C vehicles be permitted for the dates of June 29 to July 4. Council direct staff to initiate temporary zoning bylaws to give force to this motion, and that the fee schedule for the use as described above, listed in Document One, be included in the 2017 draft budget. Notice a motion for next meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Great. I want to thank 2017. This is an innovative way because we know we're going to have some challenges in peak periods with respect to hotels and bed and breakfasts and so on, so this gives people an opportunity to stay in some of our very beautiful community center and park areas, and we will debate this at the next meeting. So thank you for doing that. Our next notice a motion is moved by myself, seconded by councillor, seconded by my, sorry, moved by councillor Chernoshenko, seconded by myself, with respect to the AIDS Committee Monument. Councillor Chernoshenko, please.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. For a couple of years now, the AIDS Committee of Ottawa is operating out of their new office in my ward on Main Street, and they approached me to try and find a site here in the city, an appropriate site for a memorial. This has become quite standard in cities around the world to have a memorial, and working with city staff, we were able to identify potential sites here on city hall grounds. You see a whole lot of wherazas in front of you. Describe the work that we've done to do that appropriately, size, scale, NCC permission, et cetera. This is simply a first step to be able to move forward with that in partnership with the AIDS Committee of Ottawa.
Great. Thank you, councillor Chernoshenko. Are there any other notices a motion for consideration at subsequent meeting? Notice of intent. Avides intentions. Notice of intent from the Integrity Commissioner to submit the 2016 annual report for consideration as part of the 2014-2018 midterm governance review at the Finance and Economic Development Committee of November 1, 2016. Motion to introduce bylaws. Motion important presentation de règlement. Conseiller Meadek, appuyé par conseiller Cloutier, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, Mayor. That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
On the motion. Carried. Confirmation bylaw. Reglementation de ratification. Councillor Meadek.
Thank you, Mayor. That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of October 26, 2016.
Carried. Adopté. Inquiries. We have one written inquiry from councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is a result of a number of concerns brought to my attention by tenants in various River Ward apartment buildings recently. Has the City of Ottawa declared bedbugs a public health hazard? And what is the city, through its various boards and/or committees, doing to address the spread and negative impacts of bedbugs? Thank you.
Okay. Adjournment. Councillor Meadek, please.
Thank you, Mayor. That the proceedings of the city council meeting of October 26, 2016 be adjourned.
On the motion. Carried. Adopté. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. Merci beaucoup.